We have an apology from councillor Tavish, not councillor Danes. I'll move that that be received. Councillor Hawkins, councillor Pete, those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
That's agreed. And as I informed earlier, I have a motion from... What's the member? Have I lost?
You're talking. Is your microphone...
Can you not hear me? One, two, three. Sorry, as I informed earlier, I think it would be sensible, people seem to agree, I'll move, secondly councillor Hawkins, that we confirm the agenda with the movement of item 6 to precede item 3, so it becomes the first item, so that Dr Griffin doesn't have to call his heels while we discuss campers and dogs and he can go off and do more fabulous things at the museum. So could we move... Could I put that? Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no, that's agreed. Dr Griffin, would you like to come up please and talk, make any comments you wish to about your report? And remind councillors on item 3, a reminder to stand aside any matters where there is interest beyond that from the general public. Now, Dr Griffin, would you like to make some comments about your report before questions?
Yes, thank you. I just want to make some brief comments, the report's in front of you. I just want to summarise perhaps the most important thing that's happened at the museum in the last couple of months has been the announcement that we will be opening a new planetarium, hopefully at the end of October, and that's summarised briefly in this report. There's a lot of activity going on, obviously I refer to our submission as part of the annual plan in process, and we've had a number of successful exhibitions, and I've just come away from a very, very busy museum, because it seems that people like to come to the museum on cold, snowy days. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Any items from the report? Councillor Pete?
Yeah, thank you. You mentioned the planetarium, which obviously excites quite an interest in Dunedin's night sky, and I know you've presented to the Atagap Peninsula Community Board in terms of potential for watching the stars and the aurora and so on. I'm just wondering, I mean, you've also flagged the issue of kind of how light can spill into the heavens and affect that, and I'm just wondering if you have any comments on what we need to do as a council to support the development of night sky viewing and the possible big tourism that might eventuate from that?
Well, as I say, speaking from the museum's perspective, we see the planetarium as not just a brilliant educational tool, we see it as potentially an anchor for a new strand of tourism in the city, as you referred to Neville. Just two weeks ago, I went to see the lunar eclipse up at Mount Cook, and on that night, the existing night sky tourism facility at Lake Tecapo at Mount John was completely full of people paying $250 a night. To the Tecapo economy, night sky tourism's worth between $15 and $20 million a year, that's an independent economic impact assessment. And Tecapo is four hours from the nearest airport, and the infrastructure in Tecapo can't really accommodate large numbers of people. So the museum is, we see night sky tourism as something that we can help develop in this area, so we're building a planetarium, and in our offering for later in the year, we're actually offering experimental night sky tourism opportunities, so we are offering chances for people to come and see a planetarium show, and then we will take them out to Hoopas Inlet or Papanui to view the night sky through a telescope. And for that to be successful, we've got to protect the night sky in that particular places, because obviously if we have too much light over there, you don't get a good view of the night sky. So one of the things I would encourage councillors to do, and I know the council is very interested in this, is when you are thinking about new lighting solutions for the city, ensuring that they're full cut-off solutions, ensuring that they don't potentially, well, save money from a green perspective, don't pollute the night sky more than the existing solution that we have, and I know the council officers are working very hard on this, and I look forward to working with them to hopefully make sure that not only do we have a fantastic new set of streetlights, but they're the best in the world and Dunedin has great night skies, and hopefully lots of people will come and stay overnight and spend lots of money in the economy.
It does lead to one more question in terms of riding infrastructure and parking for, you know, waves of people that might come out in the night, and I presume, I mean, this council would obviously have to have a role to play in that and developing that. I guess you see, do you see, you know, the development of viewing areas as something for the future?
Oh absolutely, yes. I mean, the existing infrastructure can deal with relatively small numbers, but I wouldn't, I would hope certainly not going to have thousands of people coming out every night, but certainly the Atagap Peninsula is already well-equipped for nature tourism, and I think the night sky nicely complements that.
Thank you, councillor Vandewerst.
In the interests of not just the city street lighting, but the commercial lighting and residential lighting that will inevitably develop, especially with the changed LEDs, do we as a council in consents have the technical limitations, if you like, to be able to specify that all future lighting is going to basically be essentially compliant with a night sky ideal? That is to say, I know that we're changing to LED lighting for street lighting, and that whoever's doing that is definitely looking at the shuttering of those lights, but do we have a technical specification? Is that something that you're able to supply to our consents department? And do we as a council need to move in the direction of getting consent staff to include that as a requirement for any new building or commercial lighting?
Well, I'm certainly not technically, I don't know the legal situation with regard to what the consents are, but certainly there are technical solutions that have been implemented in places like Lake Tecapo, where they do literally control the lighting that is allowed in town, and it works very effectively, and it's seen as an economic benefit for the town to do that, and as a way of setting itself apart from any other city. And Dunedin could be the biggest city in the world to be a dark sky city, and there are certainly solutions that can be shared with the council, and I know in fact the officers are already looking into this, because I think they've seen what can be done elsewhere, and I'm very hopeful that they will choose a good solution.
So you know they're looking into it in terms of council-owned street lighting, do you know if they're also including it in consent requirements?
I'm not aware of this issue, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, I'll ask you elsewhere.
Thank you, councillor Kelver.
Who we or could we interact with the people up north who are now teaching navigation by the stars?
Well absolutely, when we, one of the shows that we're opening the planetarium with is a show about, it's called Manifat 2: The Power of the Stars, and it talks all about the Maori knowledge. John Broadden, who's a well-known playwright round here, has been commissioned to write that for the museum, so we will absolutely talk about not just, you know, the night sky as it is, but also the cultural knowledge of the folks who sailed the Pacific Ocean a thousand years ago, and that's a key part of what we want to do with the planetarium.
Thank you. The reports were noted, I'll move that, oh councillor Pete?
I'm just going to move or secondly?
I'll move that it be noted, and secondly councillor Pete, any further discussion? Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no, that's agreed, thank you, Dr Griffin. Thank you councillors. Richard, is there anything you want to, any comment you want to make about the report before we go to questions?
Perhaps I should say first, I think we all appreciate the nature of many of the issues here, and more importantly, appreciate the work that you have put in over a long period around some different issues to manage this problem that presents itself because of the way that the water is consigned, and also manage the pursuit of local tourism. So I think it's important that that's on the record, so.
Tavish said that, any comment you want to make about what you've presented to us?
No, they'd better take questions.
All right, firstly councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Firstly, thank you Richard and all staff for this new and approved reporting format, it's been quite useful, but I have a question about the summary of considerations, and I don't know if this is a teething problem with the new setup or Freudian slip or otherwise, but under the fit with strategic framework, only economic development is noted, when surely this would impact on our environment or our parks and recreation strategies also, and whatever, however developed they are at this point?
It could, yeah, I guess we saw a specific fit with economic development at this stage, I'm sure it will have impacts on others to varying degrees, I guess that was the one we identified specifically at this time, but I'll take your point, it could impact on a number.
Just a question for Mr Pickford, they don't have to pick, authors don't have to pick one, do they?
Through the chair, no, Richard's correct in that you could choose, that there's probably an impact across many different strategies, but the economic development is a primary one I suggest.
Thank you, and my second question is just about the existing bylaw itself on page 411. 23.4 Interpretation, where it says camp means to stay overnight or more than one night at any local authority area, in a car, camper van, caravan etc. Is that, that's defined by the legislation, that interpretation, or is that our interpretation?
I understand that is our interpretation, but if you...
Councillor Wilson.
Just having set on that here, and my understanding is that it may have been limited because it couldn't include a boat, under the legislation you couldn't use a boat, we couldn't restrict staying on a boat.
Yeah, I think one of the issues that is going to flow from whatever council decides or committee decides today is that we are really going to have to work very thoroughly through a consultation process to nail down what we can do and what we can't do.
So to answer your question, it's not set by the freedom camping act, so that is our definition.
But using this definition, were we to have gone down a prohibition route rather than the enabling route that we have, it would have been an offence for anybody in those areas to be sleeping in their car overnight, as per this. So for example, in any residential area, North Dunedin, South Dunedin, McCandrew Bay, whatever, if you've had one too many beverages and decided to sleep it off rather than drive home, if freedom camping were prohibited in those areas, that would be an offence?
Technically it would be, if they were within a prohibited area.
I'm happy to move the recommendations.
Thank you. Can I just, just before you do, I want to ask a question, Richard, about the paragraph, 45, paragraph 35, where you talk about the Queenstown situation, where essentially half of the, of the bidders and half of the fines that have been issued has been collected. You recall we discussed the possibility of, it might be an approach to government, is there any capacity for collection at the border of unpaid fines of this kind, as has been followed up with the border controls on other outstanding debts when people go to leave?
To the best of monitors, there's not, the approach Queenstown Lakes are taking is to request changes to allow it to be collected directly off the rental car companies, that won't address people who come and purchase vehicles and camp and then suddenly leave.
So there's currently no capacity for that collection? So that might be, as part of the process, we'd be able, should we choose to, to ask government for statute change by way of minor regulation change to include this sort of infringement as that wider capture would be helpful for everyone.
All right, now councillor Hawkins, you were moving the recommendation on page 41. Sorry, another question? It's, number 36, the advice from Queenstown Lakes to the council, that it's cross, strikes me that the scale would be significantly greater there, so I just wonder how safe it is to extrapolate from there to the Dunedin situation, it'll be quite neutral, do you have any comment on that?
I guess my only comment on that would be if we do progress down this path, we would need to give that much more careful consideration for the Dunedin example, that is just really just relaying what has been provided to me by a staff member over at Queenstown Lakes, certainly except there is a difference in scales, but I guess it's just there as an example, yeah, rather than an assumption that the same could apply in Dunedin.
All right, councillor Pete?
Richard, as we all know, there have been two summer camping seasons during which this trial has been conducted. At McCandrew Bay, that's generated most complaints, can you tell us just the difference between the two seasons, because there's been changes made for the second season in terms of signage, in terms of security patrols?
Yeah, I can give you an eye of sales in hand for the first season, but in general I can. There have been similar issues, particularly with the volume of campers at those sites. I think one thing that has changed is the messaging to the community at McCandrew Bay has been consistent around the end of the trial being the end of April this year, and that the council would be reviewing that as required by the policy, so that has resulted, and I think some of those complaints not coming through to council because they were aware that a review was on the table, but I don't think there's been a significant change in the numbers of campers still using McCandrew Bay.
And, sorry, just one more, same page, point 4, 4.5, at the bottom there, there's a reference to a final, a report coming from DOC about a possible DOC-style campsite, and is there any indication yet when that might come, just in light of the fact that there's only a few months really between the time we consider this, look at it, possibly look at a bylaw, and when the next season starts?
Yeah, there is. We've received a draft report now, that DOC are reviewing along with council staff, I can't give any more information, I haven't had a detailed look through it yet, we're obviously aware the timeframes are pretty tight, and we need to work with DOC through that report, and then a decision on whether or not they feel it is a suitable project for them on one of their sites.
Just on that, in that same paragraph, the last bit of paragraph 40, there's a bit of DOC speak over the page. Can you just tell me what it means? The last bit, this is, "A key objective of the department is to grow the community connection to locally important sites that affect the greatest number of people, in this case who have been through partnerships." I don't know what language that is, I'm just wondering if you can help.
So that, you're right, it's from DOC, so they, in order for them to get this through, it needs to, it needs to be a direct link to their key objectives, and that is one of them, so that they do feel that our contact with DOC here are comfortable that this would be a project, they would have a high priority for it.
When we have the opportunity, I will be able to ask DOC staff what that means.
No further questions. Councillor Hawkins, you were wanting to move the recommendation, I take it you're referring to 41A. Oh, councillor Wiley, I'm sorry, you're on my list.
Thank you, one of my favourite topics.
This is for a question, that is.
It is, yes. Richard, you know, I appreciate what you and your staff have done over the summer, we've been on regular dialogue, to get speed replies as you have, it's been brilliant, and to see you've been on top of the issue. How have you been working with the other councils around the country, for example, Coromandel and Marlborough?
I haven't had any contact with them directly, the only, I've reviewed all their bylaws and any information that's come out of particularly Thames, who have obviously been subject to a High Court review of their bylaw, haven't had any direct conversations with Marlborough or Thames.
Obviously there must be other councils going through similar issues as we are, you know, obviously Queenstown Lakes, but in the North Island as well, were you and, talking to any of those others?
No.
One of the parts that I found very interesting in reading this and looking what we've been through is on page 4.36, was the definition of self-contained. I think that to me was one of the key highlights in looking through when we look at the vehicles. So is that going to be a key step because self, in the sense of the process?
Well, the definition of self-contained is really, in the majority of bylaws in North Dunedin, is set by the New Zealand standards, and that is the only consistent definition. So they have a suite of standards that a vehicle needs to meet in order to receive that self-contained sticker that is, and that is what is applied in almost all instances in bylaws, and for consistency and clarity, for me, that would be the appropriate step.
I mean, the three-day self-contained, sorry, I mean, the three-day self-contained ability?
Yes, that's part of that New Zealand standard, yes.
So can I just ask about that before you go on? So what about the other sticker that refers to the self-containment that's contained in the portable plastic potty that's in the back of the van, rather than a fully self-contained tank?
Yeah, so that wouldn't apply, and that would be up in any future policy or bylaw to ensure we're very clear.
We would have the full ability to preclude that.
That's right, correct.
Councillor Wiley.
Do we have any numbers coming through yet on how the growth of camper van market is growing from New Zealand tourism companies?
No, we haven't as yet.
Do you think that, will that be a possibility of getting that before, as we go through to June 8?
Yes.
Because obviously that's kind of, the market's only dramatically increased over the last few years.
Yeah, I think we would be able to get our hands on that information.
Okay, involvement with the Motor Caravan Association, what are we looking there?
At this stage, none, obviously pending a decision from council today. If there is to be a review as recommended, then they would be a stakeholder we would have significant conversations with, given their interest in this topic.
Do they have any developments on, in any areas in development at the moment, or look at new areas to set up?
In terms of camps in Dunedin, not that I'm aware of, just the one that they've got existing.
Involvement with campground owners?
Again, at this stage not, but certainly a key stakeholder for us to engage with if we do undertake a review.
Okay, looking at Dr James Henry's report on 4.44, I was really interested to see that the, how the visitor's spend was going, and what the campers were doing. When we see this, do we, what were the keys that you got out of it that were important to the city?
Well, I guess the probably important thing is, this report's an enterprise then report based on Dr Harvey's, he undertook a survey and provided the data to Sophie, and she has undertaken to pull it together. I haven't done too much analysis of the spend itself, I was more interested in the communications and how campers were finding out about the rules in terms of what communication we'll need for the future, so that's probably a question we need to direct back to enterprise.
Okay, I was just really conscious that the top five attractions were all free attractions in the graph, and they weren't doing some spending ones.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins, you were happy to move?
Yeah, I'm going to move.
That's the recommendation on 41, preferred option. Secondly councillor Noon, further discussion? Councillor Pete?
Oh, I'd just certainly like to endorse what councillor Wiley said about the effort of the staff to conduct a trial in a meaningful way and try to contain some of the complaints that have emanated from McCandrew Bay in particular. It seems to me that we are looking at something actually before the official end of the trial on 30 April, so we're trying to expedite some action that will tidy up, fix the shortcomings in a bylaw review and the policy around that, and just tidy things up for next year, because I think the people at McCandrew Bay, whether they are opposed or actually not to worry about camping, need to be reassured on this question. It has been dividing that community for now a couple of years, and I think we all want to see some sort of resolution that we can live with, because everybody wants to see tourists on the Atagap Peninsula, and it is certainly one of the great places to visit if you're interested in wildlife and senior and coastal scenery. So thanks for your work on that, and I look forward to some, you know, to bylaw and other changes that will make this possible and make our Peninsula a welcoming place.
Thank you, councillor Noon.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Look, once again, I welcome the report and welcome the step towards reviewing the bylaw, just a couple of comments about Warrington, it didn't feature us for the security patrols, just a bit of local knowledge, the feedback generally speaking has been positive, however, I did receive a letter from a resident who indicated some summer nights there were between 20 and 45 vehicles on the domain. Historically, there's always been freedom camping occurring on that site as long as I can remember, but the point is, at times there were really just too many vehicles to, there wasn't adequate infrastructure to cope with the number, simple as that, but generally speaking, quite positive out there, and I'd have to acknowledge a number of locals who took it upon themselves to provide a bit of advice about where the rubber should go, or what they should and shouldn't do on the domain, so that was nice, have that partnership working away, even though it wasn't an official partnership.
Thank you, councillor Wilson.
I just wanted to almost follow, follow on well from councillor Noon, to say that while there have been concerns in certain areas, I have to say that there is a large part of Dunedin where freedom camping has worked very, very well, and that I am amazed the number of people I see camper vanning and tenting as well, which isn't covered off in this bylaw at all, well, in fact I think we precluded it, and on our road in Saito 87, right up towards Hyde and beyond, and it's done really, really well, and in a really caring manner. So I hope we're not throwing out the baby with the bathwater really on this one, and just because of what's happening in one particular area, and I think what we have to do is make it very clear that there is, freedom camping is a great thing for Dunedin, it's a great city to come and freedom camp, and that includes tenting, and I hope we can cover that one off, because I'm again amazed by the number of cyclists with tents on Saito 87, it's nothing I'd ever do, but some do do it.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure it's actually a problem to solving itself now that the German tourist, young tourists have discovered they can get free camper vans at Christchurch anyway. You haven't read the news?
No, must have.
I'll explain later. Councillor Hawkins, oh councillor Wiley.
Thank you. I think this was a great report, we're moving in the right direction, the key thing is we've got to be seen to be open for tourism and continually promote tourism, you know, unfortunately, there's a few that really stuff it up for the rest, and I think, you know, as we move forward on this, I think we really will have a holistic or a great overview of freedom camping in the city that's going to benefit all parts of the community, but also really looking after the residents as well, and I think that's an important part, and I think freedom camping is growing, and it's going to continue to grow, we have to embrace it, we need to embrace it, so it's benefit for the visitors and for the residents.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins, you wrote a reply.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to endorse your appraisal of Mr Saunders' handling of the situation of baptism of fire in this organisation, dealing with community concerns that have poured on the hostile, quite frankly, and so thank you for being such a model public servant, Mr Saunders, in dealing with them. I'm pleased to hear from, pleased to get acknowledgement from councillor Pete, this is a divisive issue, it's all too often presented to us as a unified concern of the peninsula community, and I for one have fielded feedback from locals of McCandrew Bay who have been embarrassed at how their community has treated our visitors, and particularly how their community leaders have handled that situation. And I am concerned a little bit by the economic development focus of this report, I think the environmental impacts and the impact on our parks and reserves are as important, if not more so, but I have faith in the draft to come to us subsequently, that will canvas all of those. So just, I guess finally, by supporting this recommendation, we're setting in motion a process where we can collectively, as a community, come up with a more constructive response to the, well, constructive solutions, because these problems aren't going to go away anytime soon as much as we may wish them to, so just an appeal I guess for everybody involved to take a step back hopefully over the next few months and engage with us on this process.
Thank you. I'll put it, those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no, that's agreed unanimously, thank you very much. Thanks, Mr Saunders. That takes us to the final agenda, item 5, Ms McGill and others? Niche of the councillor board. Would you like to, would you like to make some comment about your report before we go to questions?
Thank you, yes, through the chair. I just wanted to say that due to the high level of community interest in regards to the dog control bylaw, we do consider it requires further consultation in some specific areas. Those are outlined in our report, and there will be some other areas that we will be considering as well. For example, the permit of two or more dogs, looking at exercise parks, working dog definition, some of the other areas we'd like to look at. And we'd also think that we need to currently look at the prohibited areas and the non-behaved areas, or permitted areas, should I say. We need to look at them very carefully, because this is ten years old, and there will be things that have changed over that time. And so I think by doing that, we will hopefully have some idea of the opinion of the community and their feedback to develop a draft bylaw that will reflect that.
Thank you. Can I kick off the questions? Just a question about the figures that you provided on five-two. While I've got no issue with further consultation issues like this, whether that will help us or not, remains to be seen. But I'm concerned at the presentation of the figures, given the fact that they represent small cohorts. And what I mean is, that my understanding is, they're the percentages of the people who self-identified in the pop-up survey, either dog owners or non-dog owners. But there are a hundred and twenty-six thousand people roughly living in the city, and only thirteen thousand of those are dog owners. There might be sixteen thousand dogs, but thirteen thousand dog owners. And so those figures on five-two aren't actually meaningful percentages, quite the opposite, because the dog-owning cohort is ten percent roughly of the population of the city. Is that correct?
That's the number that we have on our records.
Right, so I'm just wondering if in future, when you present documents like this, while it is quite accurate to talk about those percentages in reference to the survey, it would be really helpful to put out right at the start that the dog-owning section of our city is ten percent of the population, because that is a slight effect on the weighting of the views of those two groups. The ninety percent are non-dog owners, and I don't think that's reflected in the review. So if I could just make my appeal to do that. Other questions, please. There appear to be none. The recommendation is...
There is.
Oh, there are some. Mr Culpeper.
Just note your recommendation that we go back for further engagement, and I'm interested to know, you've got two options here, and I'm interested to know why you felt that you needed a better understanding of community opinion. So I guess I'm asking about your confidence in what you've already heard, that you feel you need to go for another round, as it were, whereas your option two indicates that you could get similar information by another means, by short-circuiting and going straight to a draft, so.
I guess the answer to that is that we'd like to, we'd like, the council is probably going to be in a better position if they can adopt a draft bylaw for formal consultation that is actually informed to the greatest extent possible, as opposed to putting up a straw man bylaw for community feedback. And we think that further consultation will help inform that bylaw.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, because there's nothing wrong with a straw man, if that's what you say it is, if you identify it. So I guess what I'm asking is, you're not, on the consultation you've done so far, you're not confident that the straw man would be rebutted enough?
Well, the information we've got so far is based on eight hundred people that chose to give their feedback, so we think it would be better to have another cut.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Of all of the further community engagement steps that you are proposing, you take under option one, which of those would you not have undertaken as part of the formal consultation process for option two? And if we go with option one, will you then do all of those things twice, once before the draft policy and bylaw is put out for submission, and then once afterwards as part of that consultative procedure?
So the first round of community engagement was just the opt-in survey and the people's panel survey, as well as of engagement with stakeholders. Now that feedback has shown some areas where there could be differences in community opinion against the current policy and bylaw, we're wanting to target that consultation to those specific areas so we can understand those areas some more. And I think that means that when we go out for consultation on a formal consultation on a draft bylaw, we'd be in a much better position to have, we'd have a better starting point for that formal consultation.
That wasn't quite my question, sorry. I'll try again. All of the things, I mean, just reading seventeen, for example, under option one, this reads like what we would go out and do when we were consulting on a bylaw as part of the consultation process. So if you're proposing to do that before the formal process, I'm assuming that we will then turn around and do it again as part of the engagement around the formal consultation process?
Not necessarily. This pre-engagement, the second stage of pre-engagement that we're proposing would be more of an informal engagement as opposed to formal consultation, where there's a draft bylaw and formal submissions and hearings. So there wouldn't be that at this stage. And we wouldn't necessarily go to that level of engagement for the formal process if council felt confident in their proposed bylaw.
Mr Chairman, I'm happy to move option two.
That will come to you in a moment. Councillor Wilson.
I just, taking up the point that councillor Hawkins made in the previous paper about the strategies that are affected, I'm intrigued that the integrated transport strategy isn't one that's ticked off here, considering that where we tend to try and have footpaths or cycleways and let people on there with dogs, often with leads, they're often seen as in conflict. And I see, and I'm slightly concerned what's going to happen at this in Edensmire, and as it extends and it becomes more popular, whether dogs and leads are going to be an appropriate place on walking cycling routes. So I'm just wondering, it isn't, detracts or contributes, it's not applicable under your summary of considerations. Is there going to be, if you undertake a wider review, that sort of consideration? We've already got it presumably in the opt-in, in that area.
Yeah. This is the first round of using this report template, so we are still learning ourselves on particularly that strategic framework fit section, but it's definitely something that will.
Will look into.
Thank you.
Councillor Calvin.
I'm not sure quite whether this is the appropriate place, but it may be. Can we, if we're consulting with people, ask them also whether they think it's appropriate that the owners of poorly behaved dogs are funded, at least partially by the owners of well-behaved dogs, in a way we don't do with cars? You know, poorly behaved cars have their own costs, and beside that, we spread them across the whole community. For some reason, we've targeted the owners of well-behaved dogs and charged them part of the cost of administering poorly behaved dogs. Is this something we can ask while we're consulting about a bylaw, or is it not, is it not part of the bylaw of what we, our registration procedures?
So those decisions wouldn't be part of a bylaw, but if we're doing some pre-engagement or community engagement in the area of dog or animal control, then that's definitely something that we can ask the community for feedback on.
That apportionment of costs is part of the annual plan, in terms of the public good component of those fees.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, there's three bits here. There's the public good, and there's the bad dog owner, and there's the good dog owner. And the good dog owner pays for the bad dog owner partially. And that's separate from whether the community pays for it.
Well, I think the point is, councillor, it's not part of the debate around the bylaw, or it's part of a debate around the annual plan, and the setting of that apportionment. Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. What are the trends of dog ownership around the world? Like, one of the biggest ones I start seeing is dogs in the workplace. So are we starting to see that happen in Dunedin?
Sorry, could you clarify your question, please?
Well, we're looking at whether we go to further engagement, or whether we just adopt the draft policy. You know, you talk about pop-up stands and face-to-face discussions. Are we talking to employers and people like that in regards to whether the dogs in the workplace are something that trends that are going to take in Dunedin? For example, Christwater House Coopers did it last Friday.
That's a private matter, and if they wish to have dogs within the workplace, if I'm understanding your question correctly, it wouldn't be a matter for the bylaw to address?
By getting to and from work, and for some of these businesses, obviously accessing some of the areas.
If they're going directly from one place to another through the business area, that's permitted, if they access the workplace.
All right, councillor Hawkins, now you want to move option two. Okay, you have done that. It's a second to please. Second by the mayor. Now, the effect of this would be to get on with it, rather than get on with it later, straw man or not. Do you want to speak to it now, or just your right of reply? Further discussion. Then, Mr Hawkins, your right of reply.
Thank you. My ward attempts to reach a consensus around the contentious issues such as this one. Any draft policy or bylaw that we go out to the public with isn't going to please everyone, as any of my colleagues who have sat on the local alcohol policy process can attest. But that isn't an excuse in and of itself, I don't think, to put up something for public discussion through that process. It certainly doesn't warrant two whole rounds of public engagement to come to that process. So let's get on with it.
Well, I'm sure the staff will be happy at the reduced work involved. So then I'll put it, those in favour, please. Oh, sorry, that was the right of reply. Those in favour, please.
Aye.
Against no. That is also agreed unanimously. Are there any items that you wish to alert me, that you wish to add to an agenda for the future? Councillor Wilson.
Just taking on councillor Vandevos's comments and questions of Dr Griffin, I'm just wondering whether there should be a consideration for review of subdivision bylaw, or code of subdivision, and/or any consent conditions that should be appropriate around a night sky. And I think that comes under your matters of interest.
It will come in this committee most likely in terms of consent, so can we make a note of that?
Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful.
Could we broaden the episode slightly? If the staff are going to be looking at consent conditions with night sky in view in the future, could they also look at the possibility of addressing some retrospective issues? I know, for instance, there'd be a lot of complaints regarding Port Tago light spill down at Port Chalmers. This must have a quite large effect, because some of those lights are completely shattered at all.
Well, Mr Pickford, to check on whatever complaint, about that issue, and ask you if you've got any particular information to give that to Simon, so that can be followed up.
Just a word of caution on councillor Vandevos's point about existing light spill. If they've been lawfully established, it's a different kettle of fish than creating, reviewing it.
Let's have a look at it.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting we look at two kettles of fish.
We've agreed to that. All right. In that case, I'll decree the meeting. Oh, councillor Wilson? Councillor Wilson is giving me a rude gesture, which means she wants five minutes before the meeting starts. We'll take a break for five. Thank you very much for your cooperation.